Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call this to order. This is the public hearing number three on the tax mileage. Mr. Brandon Douglas, as you can tell, we're a pretty full house, so thank you for being with us. If there is an empty seat, please make sure to make room for your neighbor. The agenda calls for this to start at 5:30. We gave a few instructions just to make sure folks will be into us. The council meeting is scheduled to start at 6:00 p.m. That meeting will start once we conclude this public hearing. So I suspect that this public hearing will last longer than 30 minutes. So just so you're aware, we'll start whenever we get done with our public hearing. Mr. Douglas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and for the public in attendance. This is the third public hearing, and it required three public hearings on the mileage rate. For some of you who may have seen, we had a 9:00 a.m. administrative public hearing on the 26th, and we had a public hearing on the 26th as well at 6:00 p.m. before the mayor and council. So this is the same slideshow that we provided those two public hearings. We kind of inserted some additional clarifying information. So, Mr. Mayor and council and public, I'm not going to go through a 20-minute slideshow because I do know that the public wants to be heard. So we'll kind of go through this. Today is the Monday, October 7th at 5:30, as the mayor said, just a little bit after. So we are here to talk about the mileage rate. And specifically, we're here to talk about the city's mileage rate. It's the tax rate that is used to calculate local property taxes. So many of you, if you're property owners, you'll have a county, a school, and if you live in the corporate city limits, you'll have a city tax rate as well. If you are on city water, but you live outside of the city limits, you do not pay the mileage rate. So it is only for those property owners that reside or own property within the corporate city limits. So that is what we are discussing here this evening. So the property taxes, the mileage rate, is used to help fund local governments of the services. So for instance, the police, fire, code compliance, planning and zoning, inspections, public works, which consists of some of our streets, stormwater parks. And we also have one employee who handles our fleet maintenance. That position is actually split between our general fund and our enterprise fund. Because that one individual does work on our police vehicles, and will work on a line maintenance truck in our sewer department. So the fleet maintenance individual is split their salary. And if you look at the budget, it's in both. We have administrative services. It consists of kind of internal functioning, human resources, finance, city management, elections. We don't have any dedicated personnel. We typically outsource that to the county. But there is a component unit of cost associated with it in the general fund. We do have a municipal court and animal control. So with regards to the current mileage rate, we have 5.221. That yields us, we did actually just go over, we're $1,703,000, I believe is what we collected. So just to kind of put that into context, that is one line of revenue in about 96 lines of revenue that the city receives. So if you were to look at the overall $7 million general fund budget, the mileage rate comes in $1.7 million. So there's 96 other revenue lines. And many of you got the handout out front, so you'll be able to look and see all the different lines that the city has to have in terms of helping to balance the budget. And just to put into context, the 2024 public safety budget combined, which is police and fire, was $4.4 million, nearly $4.5. So oftentimes, mayor, council, the public, you look at these budgets, and if you're familiar with governmental accounting, what we've done at the mid-year budget amendment was you basically have 80% to 90% of the budget that is comprised of salary benefits. There's usually between 10%, 15%, maybe 20% of office supplies, gas, oil, things of that nature. Capital expenditures, things that you can kind of tangibly vehicle, equipment, things like that are typically devoted to a capital improvement fund because those particular items have such a value that's greater than, I think ours is $5,000 or $10,000. That is dedicated as a capital expenditure. So anything in governmental accounting with regard to a shovel, that would be something that would be included in the 10% or 15% of that overall budget. So once again, the general fund does help to fund the police, fire, code compliance, planning and zoning, inspections, public works, administrative, elections, municipal court, and animal control. So this is just the, according to Georgia law, all taxing agencies must advertise a tax increase and hold three public hearings to claim taxes on reassessed properties even if the mileage rate remains unchanged. So what that means is, we asked the council to consider not rolling the mileage rate back. We had kind of done a forecasting of what the 2025 budget would look like based on kind of our amended 2024 budget, and recognized that there was a couple of line items, specifically the building permits. Builders and developers are external factors that if they say in 2023 that they're going to build, and so we assemble a budget predicated on those estimations. We do not issue business license or building permits or anything until they are ready to do so. So one of the things that had been asked at the previous public hearing was, what was the reasoning for the recommended increase? And in a nutshell, it's to fill the gap of that revenue line. So you'll notice on the revenue sheet, you'll see a building permits line in the 2024. Regular line budget as approved, there was about $750,000 expected, forecasted, predicted. We have maybe received up to $300,000. So that's a pretty significant shortfall. And so in 2025, because we have no control over when builders or developers come to the development department, come to the city and say, hey, I'm now ready to build. So how much should I have to pay for that particular permit? We have to be conservative in our approach to say, we will eventually realize some of these building permits from these property owners, but perhaps we need to be a little more mindful that it's not going to all come in one particular lump sum. So many of you are here this evening. You may have seen this particular ad. We did discuss it, that the 31% is based upon the rollback rate that had we rolled back, recommended rollback, is based upon that rate. It's not the 5.221, it's the 5.1 mileage rate, the rollback rate. So this is the third and final public hearing. As advertised, there will be the subsequent consideration approval of the mileage rate during our regular scheduled meeting, which will take place at the conclusion of this public hearing. So in regards to the handouts, the first two columns on the left, the appraised value and assessed value, those two line items, two columns if you will, they are both controlled by the county tax assessor. They look at what your property is worth based upon a formula they have. And I, because I'm not a county employee in that particular office, I don't have the qualifications to tell you, but it's not something that the city has any control over. The assessed value is 40% of that appraised value. So when the county tax assessor comes to take a look at the properties, and they say that your property is worth X, the tax rate is based upon 40% of that value. So just in terms of if you had a $100,000 appraised piece of property, the tax rate is 40% or $40,000. So then you take the $40,000, and then you multiply that by the accompanying mileage rate. So once again, you'll have a county tax rate, a school tax rate, and our current mileage rate of 5.221. The proposed mileage rate of 6.721, you'll see in the handout, does average out to about $170 a year, and it's about $14.19 on average per month. And that was based upon a 15-property sample size that, no scientific reason, we just pulled throughout the community, some properties that, you know, you're familiar with, some older communities, and then some newer ones in the last several years. So they averaged out to around $280,000. You can see the assessed value tax rate, and then you'll see that the difference, once again, is in that column. And we did amend it to include the monthly rate, just in terms of, to kind of break it down to that level. So, Mr. Mayor, council, and the public, based upon those, we are recommending to increase it due to some budget shortfalls and revenue inflationary costs. No proposed increase in city personnel associated with this mileage rate increase. And just to kind of give you some idea, Mr. Mayor and council, we'll talk a little bit in the regular scheduled meeting. It's not in the actual agenda, but in committee, I'll update you that, many of you know that we had an incident with the rain event, the weather at Cove again. We weren't able to shore that up at the top of the S-curves, put in some concrete barriers where the counties help. The same company that had come out to do the work in 2019, five years ago, to scale that entire edge, was $95,000. The estimate they'd given us on just that corner was two estimates, one of over $400,000 and one $269,000. So in terms of, just as an example of that type of inflationary cost, I just thought it was apropos based upon this discussion tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, would you look behind you and make sure all the light switches are turned on? Someone hit one of the light switches, please, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll start the public hearing process. A public hearing is where we hear the public. And so as Mr. Douglas has mentioned in some of the other hearings, it's not a debate per se for the elected. We certainly don't want to argue. I would ask that you keep your decor. Well, here it is, not going to be allowed screaming. Compose yourself accordingly. We're all good people. We're all here for a good reason. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our goal is to let you speak for your three minutes, and then let your neighbor or someone else in the room speak. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to staff. They have a timer. And whenever you wish to speak, feel free to raise your hand. You can speak where you're at, or you can come up to this podium. What I do ask is that you state your name and your address. That way we know exactly who you are, and we'll keep going that way. Mr. Douglas, staff, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Light the door, park, and speak. Yes, ma'am. Say your name and your address, please.
My name is Lydia Marsick. I'm at 16 Crystal Creek Way. And listening to all the information, which I think a lot of us, it just kind of goes over our head because we don't deal with the numbers every day. One of the biggest concerns I have about taxes, especially raising them, is that it seems they never go down. So like, this huge tax increase for us is to help with a shortfall. But once that is met, and we're assuming that it's going to be met with all the incoming housing that's being developed and all that, with that income revenue, you know, what is the plan as far as bringing it back down? Because I'll be honest, right now, it makes us want to move out of the city of Jasper. We live in the cities, and we've lived here since '98. And so for us, I mean, we love this small town, but, you know, the taxes are just ridiculous. And so that's my biggest concern is what would be done once they're met, which we're assuming the shortfall will be met, to bring it down? Because it seems taxes always go up, they never come down.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else would like to speak on this?
Are you going to answer?
So as I mentioned earlier, ladies and gentlemen, and please hear me out, I'm going to be pretty particular about the way we do this. There are a lot of you in the room. If two of you, three of you start speaking, it's going to get unruly pretty quick, so let's not do that. The public hearing part is for us to hear the public. That is for us to hear you and let you voice your concerns, your questions, at the end of that. Once we are at that point where there's no one else to speak, and the public hearing section is over for public comment, I'll turn it back over to staff. They'll start to address some of the questions that are listed out. The handout that's here, that's been presented to you, is also to address some of those. And I'm sure some of the elected will probably have some comments also. So yes, someone over here raised their hand. Yes, ma'am. Feel free to state your name, please, and your address.
My name is Penny Dykes, 279 Grand Circle. And my question is this, we're having these public hearings, one of them kind of at the ninth hour. Have our comments or have the questions made any difference in influencing you? Or is this just kind of something that we're going through? Because the decision is being made right after this, you know, the public hearing part. It would be nice to know that it was given some deliberation as to how constituents feel about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Feel free to state your name and address, please.
Jeff White, 118 Wildline Bridge Road. We are getting hit with city taxes. It used to be a timber property. We've met with the manager. He pretty much washed his hands of us. I've called for extra patrols up there on our road. The officer didn't even know there was homes up there. We get no services whatsoever. We maintain our own roads. We put our own gravel on it. We don't even get a police officer, a fire truck, any of that. And they're wanting $1,000 for us to deannex. Which would be great, to deannex and not have to pay $2,000 a year for nothing. But we're going to get city and county for no reason. It's a peninsula. It's, there's nothing around us but county. And we're all tired of it.
Name one next. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lauren Darrow, 69th and Energy Land. What are the chances that this could be fueled and not resolved until next year to enable us to live? Because everything else has gone up. Water, everything, lights. And as a senior, that is too much for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Feel free to state your name and address, please.
Marlene Stein, 20 Northrend Drive. I am moved to Jasper. I just moved here in February of last year. And I don't own a home. I own, I own a townhome. I basically don't own any property. And moving here, my taxes went from $750 a year in L.J. to over $3,000 a year in Jasper. Because I haven't had any school tax. For as a senior, over 70 years of age, to have another increase in tax, I already suffered a major increase in tax when I moved here, is out of sight. I can't handle it. I'm going to have to pack my bags and move again. That's the bottom line. Is there no recourse for eliminating school tax for seniors, which is another subject I understand? I've already paid for years. I'm 81 years old. And as she said, I agree. If this has to be, why can't it be put off until we get a chance to balance our own budgets? Because our water went up, our electric went up, everything has gone up since I moved here. It's overwhelming to me, overwhelming. And I don't even own a piece of property. If my house burns down, that's nothing.
Yes, ma'am. Say your name and address, please.
Karen DiGiorgio, 65 Merton Street. My question is, have you gone through the entire budget thoroughly and see where you can trim costs? There's got to be areas where you can cut back in order to save people, especially with what's going on with the economy, because everyone is drowning. That's my first question. My second question is probably not very relevant, but, relevant but not to the mileage rate. But, you know, in researching things, it seems to me that there are a lot of residents whose taxes have gone up significantly in the last four years, sometimes doubling. And then you have a few people, and other people too, who, I get it, you owned your homes for years, and it wasn't an issue, and inflation went, or, you know, home values went up. But some people are paying, their assessment is this ridiculously low number for a house that is ridiculously more valuable than what I'm paying or other people are paying. And how is that fair? And isn't it, wouldn't it be you to get together with the assessor? I get it, that's the county and you're the city. But if you're working for citizens of your area, don't you think you should get together with the assessor's office and maybe see where things are going wrong? Because when you have someone with a 900 square foot house paying, you know, a ridiculous amount of taxes, and then you have somebody with a 1700 square foot tax, I mean, house paying significantly less, something does not add up there.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Feel free to state your name, please.
Jessica Vrenshaw, 270 Whiskey Waters Drive. I actually, it's not an answering question, so I'll just go over a couple of things. When we, remember we got this house, it was in 2012, and we got us $100,000. And it was devastatingly bad. It had been flooded multiple times. It's a rough house. Then, over the course of time, we did get the house paid off, but it's been rough, you know, fixing a lot of things. One of us pre-assessed in 2019. It went from us paying $500 to $2,500. And last year was $3,000. And we had to go back to you guys and say, it's still that massive water damage, right? But nothing inside this thing and the small sample you took is anything like my experience, my home experience, my friends. They're all paying massively. One of my friends had their double-wide trailer, quote it, "300 grand." And I know that there's double-wide selling for that, sure, right? The house market's insane. But I had to talk about, when you guys raised at that point, we had a fun way to get three brains together after busting your butt to pay off our house with medical debt through the roof, people on K-MO in our household. It's, it's rough, right? I had to talk my roommate down from taking his own life because of the impact of having suddenly, from 750 to 3,000. And then even then, we're at a point where we're living paycheck to paycheck still because of, again, K-MO and stuff like that. There's those outlined things that are happening in our lives, especially with COVID, this post-COVID, this inflation area that we're in. It seems insane to me that Kemp went as far as to get rid of the gas tax to try and create some relief. And at the same week is when you were supposed to be increasing the mileage. So like, we have one where we have the governor who's like, hey, clean has had a big impact. We already had more water damage, it's just even more water damage to fix. With that as well, we're seeing a massive increase in things like our power went up $100 bucks. Our water went up $100. The cost of our gas, our natural gas went up. But every, the cost of everything is gone.
Gross rates.
And on top of that, you've got people, and then I promise you, when you have people who are elderly that are on these fixed $20,000 incomes, their pensions, anything like that, they're not going to be able to, they can't even pay for Netflix, right? You've got people sharing Netflix, that's 14 a month. Even under the assessment that maybe they'll snipe by, they'll get $15 an extra month for what it's going to cost. But at the $48, $50, it's hard when you're eating groceries from Dollar Tree just to get by. And I can tell you, most of my friends, my 30 to 48 range, that's where we're getting our groceries. Dollar Tree, Dollar General, you know, the Walmart, great value, everything is great value. And I don't know where we're going to get that from. And that's, that's what I wanted to express, is that I think that the people at the very bottom bracket, the poorest people, are going to lose their homes. And I know many of them have lost their lives, and I don't want to see people losing their homes. The job market is awful. We're not giving a 30% raise. I think I got a quarter raise at my last job. They'd be like, hey, you're great, here's a quarter. That's, that's not going to help. That's not going to help at all. And that's, I, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Feel free to state your name and address.
Tony Davis, 400 Georgia Avenue Street. I think we just really have to get real honest right now. I mean, this is the third meeting. Everybody's voicing their concerns and their questions. But we really haven't heard anything from y'all. So if we get real honest, you've already made your decision. And you want to talk about it's inflationary, the inflation's what's driving it. But that's not it at all. You keep talking about unrealized revenues. How can you raise our taxes to that point because you created a budget on something you thought might happen or might not? How can you do that?
Please, Swenley, I'm going to remind you. Mr. Davis has the floor. Thank you.
How does that bad decision-making follow the citizens of Jasper, Georgia? I don't get it. And y'all are answering no questions. Nobody's addressed any question at any meeting up until yet. We're tired of being treated this way. He just talks in circles if we get real honest. $154,000 a year to talk in circles, and he don't even live in the city. But he proposes this increase. It's time that y'all start talking to us, not just going through preliminary functions, knowing you've already made your decision. You're going to cause us all to dismove. Because we can't keep being treated the way you're treating us. And y'all have no intentions of listening to us, answering us. You just want to get through this meeting, have your little vote. You don't care what we think. $500,000 for a stainless steel commode? Come on, let some of that go towards your unrealized. We can use a porta potty.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Feel free to state your name and address, please.
Sharon Champion, 315 South Main Street. I live with my 90-year-old mother that has paid school tax all this time, still paying school tax. Our house is a decent house. It's not a great house, and we own to the next street, that much land. My mother is on a fixed income. I'm disabled. How, how can this work for people on a fixed income? They can't. They can't stay where they live. And my mother is going to stay where she lives if I have to get $20,000 to pay for her to stay there. I think this is a shame. And I think everybody should take a look at that and be real about it. Elderly people can't afford this. They can't. Not on a fixed income. There's no way. Not possible. And y'all are all elected officials.
Yes, sir. Feel free to state your name and address.
Jason Davis, 4 Scott Drive. I can go ahead and answer a question, Mr. Davis, as far as, maybe that's the point. Maybe that's the point, we can't afford it, and we have to sell our property. They want, maybe, maybe they want us to leave. Who knows? I don't know. But at the end of the day, me, for me and my wife, my family, when we don't have money, we don't throw big parties like the Jasper Live and the Marvel Festival, always think, we're broke. Like, we're all broke. Guys, we're broke. We don't have money. It's not a problem. The problem is not a tax revenue problem. The problem's a spending problem. Stop spending money. It's not yours. It's ours. But we have a hard time making this money. Like, we, we, it's hard for us to be able to, to be able to live and survive in this town. And you all are trying to make it big into like Canton with all these big stores and all this stuff. We don't want that. But maybe you can ask the people here in Jasper what we want. And maybe actually like start to listen to what we want. We want to just be left alone and be able to keep the little bit of money we can earn so that maybe we can buy something at the grocery store for our kids, you know? Maybe we can go out and, you know, maybe spend a little bit of money if we can, but we don't have that extra money. There's no extra money. But there's no extra money. You're trying to pay the term.
Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and address, please.
Dicky Painter, 179 Indian Forest Road. And I agree with what all these other people have said. I don't, I don't know if y'all have taken under consideration that a lot of your citizens are seniors and are on disability. And we're not even getting a 3% increase for COLA this year. I think it's something like, I think they say like 2.5 or something. So I mean, that's what 20, 30 dollars if that, and then they'll take away from Medicare, they'll go up on our Medicare, you know, to cover that price. So then therefore, we're still like at a disadvantage. And then y'all are coming at us with our water bills and the power bills and everything. I don't have anything to do with power, but at the same time, then you are wanting to put on a 31% to own tax on us. And it's just overwhelming. And like me, I live by myself, I'm disabled. I won't even make 20,000 dollars a mu- a year. So y'all wanting to go up, you know, I've been living in my home for 31 years. And this is just ridiculous. I mean, a 31% increase, that is just re- just, that is just like for Atlanta or something. Not for the little town in Jasper. Your citizens can't bear that.
Yes, sir.
Davis House. Well, I think I know now why Douglas so desperate to come here. A lot of people might be shocked in there because of what you guys have been doing to them. What I wanna point out, a couple of things, the wall is being pulled over all these residents, heck, by the eyes. First of all, Mr. Douglas, well, first of all, Mr. Douglas said in the first and second meeting that this was to make up shortfalls from past administration. That's a bold-faced lie. There's 70 years of control up here. I figured it out before I came in here. Think you've been involved since 18, you've been involved since 16, you've been involved since 8 maybe, and then the city manager, you've been involved since 6. So at some point, you guys gotta start taking the point. Mr. Hannah, I believe the assistant manager, doesn't have anything to do with it. Mr. Douglas, you've been here since 19. Every year you've been here, everything's went up. That's the facts. They don't lie. Couple of things I wanna say. You made a comment that you got a shortfall in your budget from permits. Well, let's talk about that a little bit. The city made it impossible to do business with them unless you're big business. You run around, you take our feather flags down, you made all these ordinances to make this small town not small anymore. The things that we love. That's all your, your shoulders. You passed it. I don't wanna pay them my taxes, but I can't pay taxes if I can't make money. That's the truth. These people living in homes, they don't see this every day, how hard we worked to bring businesses here that actually benefit this community. Veterans cleaners, the Beatrice Allison's, things like that, things that they need. So we'll go back and we'll talk a little bit about Mr. Douglas. You said at the beginning of the meeting about the COVID. It's been so mismanaged, you don't even have the equipment to fix an emergency. You had to call the county to get equipment to fix something and rob them of the county taxpayers that the city should have been paying for. And I called the county and asked them if they billed you. They should. The city shouldn't have to pay for your shortcomings. The other thing is, we don't talk about the building permits in May. Mr. Raffield?
I mean, I don't know how else to say it.
You didn't understand the order, the ordinances, or excuse me, the charter that you represent. The attorney doesn't understand the charter. We had a chance to put a 14 million dollar workplace apartments in place. It was a no vote. That's a 14 million dollar permit that would have been permitted next month and 14 million dollars worth of assessments the city would have added taxes to alleviate all these people's backs. That's the truth. So you're a little picking and choosing winners and losers and making things, one of the most ironic things is you're telling us we gotta have under 5,000 square feet, we gotta have a sprinkler system. Georgia minimum code's 12,000. You don't even have water to put in the sprinkler system, you're too harsh to put in. It's ridiculous. That's the facts. So, you know, they say bad officials are elected by good citizens who don't vote. And that's what's happening here in the city of Jasper. Not enough people showed up and paid attention, but maybe this is the turn point. Maybe.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, David.
Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and address, please.
Kimberly Simonson, 72 Apache Ridge Road, Jasper, Georgia. This is the first meeting I've attended, and I'll tell you, I stand here with a broken heart. And it is shameful that people can lose their homes and businesses because of any kind of increase in this economy. And I just want to know, has come out publicly recently about, I believe it was Mr. Douglas has a salary of 154,000 dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, and that his assistant's being paid 54 dollars and 80 cents or something an hour, whatever that number was. But to then try to slam the citizens of Jasper, Georgia, pour this down ball, just like Mr. Schell said, that is not our fault. And I just want to challenge you guys, before you vote this, I hope you pray to God above, and I hope you can lay down and sleep at night. Like this little lady here saying she may lose her home. You need to take this into consideration. Because let me tell you, God sees it and he hears it, people. And this is wrong, what you're doing.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Ray, 293 Burt Mountain Road. I'm Ronnie Ray's daughter. He is one of the oldest businessmen in this heaven, this city, small town, county, but whatever you call it. I've been here to property that I can't put a sign on, but I'm gonna have to get a permit. And you have to car wash, so I'm trying real hard about to complain about the double water bill. And now they want me to do property tax issue. And small town is not small town anymore. I'll be the first to admit, I am guilty for not paying attention up until now. But I am not impressed with where we are going with this. The side part about the views is about half of you sitting up there, I have your cell phone number, I have your email addresses, and so far I have not made the first complaint. But this is just heartbreaking to what Jasper has always been. I have a building sitting next to my car wash that is vacant, that no business in this world can move into because the city will not allow it. So now I'm gonna pay ridiculous property tax on it because the building is too big for the parking lot. But yeah, all the way back a million years ago, true value hardware when I was a kid was in this building. My daddy had a motorcycle shop in this building for years. And now I can't even go back in this same building with a motorcycle shop. But I can pay property taxes on it like crazy.
Yes, ma'am. If you've already spoken, if you don't mind, I don't want everyone else to have a chance to speak. Who has not spoken yet doesn't like to. Yes, ma'am, I say a hand, I'm not sure. Yes.
Hi, I'm short. My name is Pat Batschman, I live at 178 Montier. And I was going over your budget here, the general fund budget. And I may be mistaken, but under the executives, you went from 185 to 235 to 407. Is that a mistake? A typographical error, maybe? The election cost 10,000 dollars. Do you use volunteers to help you with the election? Yes, all volunteers. Financial administration, it went from 309 to 845 to Baptist Street 27. I'm just wondering if we had some type of lag. Both directions. Anyway, that's what I had.
Female author has not spoken yet. Yes, ma'am.
Frances Hollen, 11 Piedmont Boulevard. I moved here two years ago, first of all, because of my children. Secondly, was the housing was a little bit more affordable. Yes, the taxes were already higher than from where I moved from, but I was willing to do that. But right now with this tax increase, it's asking me to give up a month's salary because I'm a widow and live on social security alone. And it will take a month's salary away from me. Yes, I like to have the services that we have, but I would like to see them improved somehow and make cuts where cuts can be made.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Hi, Angela Paris, 49 Bryant Square, Jasper, of course. I am a business owner here in the city. I've only been here five years. Although business has been here a little bit longer. I just think if we had more transparency from the board, I know quite a few of you live here in the city, so this mill rate is gonna affect you as well. But some of the codes are outdated. We've grown, maybe even quadrupled in size from 10 years ago, 15 years ago when they were made. And also a big deal is the city lines. It's like a jigsaw puzzle where your neighbor's not in the city, but you are, and they're receiving city services. So if it's more uniform or like typical cities, Canton, where it's just a big block, you know, if you're within a certain radius, then you're within the city, and that would help make up some of the deficit. So, and I feel like, you know, things are going up and prices going up. Our government has started that. We've seen that in the grocery store with milk, 10 dollars for bacon. I get that. So you guys are just a little bit behind in doing and following inflation like everybody else. So it's not necessarily the board's fault that's doing this. It's just taking them a little while to catch up. But at the same time, it's like when we have things get tight at home, we start cutting out things that we can't afford to live without. It's like we need water, we need electricity, but we may not be able to go to the movies, you know, once a week. So we cut that out. So maybe if there's places that we can trim the fat, so to speak. Possibly, I'm sure y'all already visited that multiple times, I have no doubt. But it just, if really the big thing is, if some of the codes, and even some of the newer codes that have come into place, can be reasonable. Some of the outdated codes we brought up to go, or today's standards, to make it easy as a business owner. Because we all know as a business owner, when our prices increase, we pass it on to the customer. It rolls downhill, and I know I don't like to be at the bottom of that pole. And when things are doing great, then it goes back up, and then you guys look awesome and doing a great job. And if we don't, then we'll have businesses that'll start shattering in downtown. That is just gonna hurt us, you know, in the long run. Because small businesses are what run it. Maybe the bigger businesses are getting taxing symptoms, we know how that works. But there's, the small businesses outweigh the bigger, bigger ones like public that's coming in, so on and so forth. But just, I'm just asking transparency and update, you know, the city, the city codes and the city limits to make everyone involved, like on West Church where I'm at. And I have to follow these stringent codes. That is hindering my business. So I'm out here.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Arby Davis, and Mr. Hannah, I just wanted to, oh, of course, that's right. Mr. Hannah, I just wanna say thank you so much for the only person responding to us aside from Mr. Brandon, since that's his job anyway. And sir, what's your name? Mr. Proctor?
Dr. Proctor, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Proctor.
I did respond to you, Hannah, and
I did not receive the answer.
I responded to you.
It's okay.
I know it's okay. You've accused me of doing something, not doing something that I did.
Ma'am, Dr. Proctor, please, listen.
Sorry, hold on one second.
I'm gonna need you here three minutes.
Yes.
And let's get through that.
I just wanna say thank you, and I'm just pointing to him because I saw him with everybody talking. He's nodding, he's nodding his head with dissatisfaction. So I just wanna know why first. And then second is, I wanna know, what is the real agenda of this whole tax increase? There's a lot of property owners here in the city and the county, and there are a lot of them are old folks. And they really can't afford any more tax increase. They're paying for school, uh, property, uh, sorry, school tax. I was floored when I found that out just now. That is insane. I wonder if y'all are doing the same thing, if you're paying for school taxes as well? But they did their job, they already worked years, and I think, um, maybe giving them a cut on that would be wonderful instead of increasing some more. Back to my point about the bigger agenda here. I want, uh, I'm wondering if the tax increase is to have people just give up their houses or if they can't pay tax, the taxes, to seize their, their, their homes or land for your purposes. And the second is, we're always, you know, like our, our house, our household, if we can't afford anything, we cut, we cut everything. Kids can't go anywhere. I have five kids with one household income. And every penny counts. I teach my kids how to work hard and how, you know, to earn money. And then we give, we give to our church, we give to a charity, not all the time, but because our kids also needs it. But I understand, I don't know if maybe not cutting the budget is so that you could just continue having that increased budget instead of, you know, giving back to the people. So last question is, when was the last time you had a tax cut? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sliding in the rear back for, yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm one of the elderly that's heading toward 90 years old.
Please state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Okay, Martha Taze, Home Creek Serenity Lane. Now, I happened to fold at the church about July 13th. I had surgery on my right leg and right. I spent one night in the hospital. This is for older people who needed for other issues. 44,250 dollars for one night overnight with a clean-out of stones been removed. And these people who are older are going to doctors. They don't have good insurance. I was a nurse, I got good insurance. People here are paying extra money to go to this doctor. I was in the doctor's office, and the man said, well, why are you charging me co-pay? I just saw the doctor down the hall, and he voted 20 dollars. And he said, I don't have it. So this is what the elderly people are. We help each other in our community for people who need assistance. But that's great. But we cannot, my husband's been dead for a long time, and I have been doing it all myself. Fortunately, I was in nursing, and when I left, we made 45,000. We did pay what they make now. And I still am living on that money. So just saying, it's not just even the taxes, it's the medical expenses. Our HLA went up and like gave us no services at all. And it's just that everything is just picking at us. And somehow, it shouldn't be because my father rented homes like when I was young because in those days, that's where you didn't have any extra money. And because I was a nurse, I was allowed to let my father buy a house because my money and his money let us buy a house. So I'm just saying, it's gonna be, everybody's gonna have to rent. They're not gonna be able to afford a pocket house, not like my grandkids. No one.
Yes, ma'am.
First off, do you have to move in the city to ask a question?
No, ma'am. If you'll state your name and address, you can absolutely speak. You'll have three minutes, just like the others. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nora Bunch. I've been at 189 Crossbow Road in Lynn. I just wanna ask, how many of you could live and pay what y'all are asking these people to pay if y'all only made 20 to 30,000 dollars a year? I'm gonna ask Mr. Douglas, could he even survive on 20 or 30,000 dollars a year? Why can he not take a Why can't he not take a pay cut to help out some of this? Why does his assistant get paid what she does? You know, in the past, there was a mayor that did the city manager job too. And he didn't get paid that kind of salary. So, you know, y'all need to think about what y'all are doing because y'all are going to get older then too. And he's going to come on too. Pay it forward.
My name is Nat DeCaster. I live at 31 Creve P, Mont Belene. I've been public here before. I don't know if, are we, is this being recorded or is somebody taking notes? Okay, it's recorded. How do we get an after? When do we get an after process? I know a lot of questions, some are, we're a lot of that. And how do we get afters to this? Are we just going to leave and that's it? Thank you.
And right behind you, there was a lady, right behind you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Diane Birch, and I'm Sarah DeLaine in Jasper. And for those that you haven't addressing, um, the school tax, I have been talking to our state representative at Jasper's. I've had some conversations with them. I've had many conversations with you, Kirk, about ideas that I had as far as trying to reduce some costs and how my past city did things and got donations so that they didn't have to go to the townspeople for that. Our amphitheater had the name of the hospital. Cross, the hospital paid for amphitheater. The, we had a sprinkler system that was in town for the kids in the playground. That was donated by Fire Task Force Tips, which was a friend who owned the fire, uh, equipment. So our, we ended up having an ice skating rink. That was, that had the name of Verizon on it. Did we care what name was on there? No, we did not care. We were not tasked for it. It was donated by a lot of people. And Kirk and I have talked about this in the past, trying to be creative in order to get funds to make your city better. And my city was a very small town city that closed up at 5:00 and it became a very vibrant city. And so I guess that's where a lot of my thoughts are. Is I, I watched this happen. I never recall having this kind of change in my revenue. Of course, I'm a senior now. So maybe my thoughts when I was working as compared to my thoughts on revenue has changed a lot with my aging. But I did speak with Rick Jasper's. I did ask him about the school tax. And his comment was that he thought it was a ridiculously low amount that was put on as that minimum income in order to not to have to pay school taxes for seniors. And he recognized that. And he himself said that he thought that was an area that should be changed. And he said that, that number is so old that should be looked at. I did tell him to come here. I don't see Rick Jasper's. I don't know, he lives here, he has a farm here. So I don't see him here. I don't know if he's attended any of the meetings. But he also said that there, it was on the agenda. They did have it up for vote when we voted and it was voted down. And it was passed. I asked him about that. He said the reason he felt that it was voted down was that the city, the county, we could not afford to lose that kind of income for that. They could not lose that amount of income if all the seniors were excluded. He said he felt like if it was a tiered system where the city could gradually, you know, make up that money, maybe it would have passed. But I guess what I'm urging everybody here, seniors, to do is to try to get that back on the ballot. Try to get some people behind you. Talk to your representatives. Talk to your state representatives. I've been doing this probably for the last month continually. And, um, and Kirk, you know, I've made myself very public since I moved here. And I think there are creative ways that we can use to reduce our budget. And I think there's also ways that you use to change things gradually when you see a budget is going to have a shortfall before that happens. And changing your, what you're doing and changing some of your projects if you see that you're going to have that much of a shortfall. So that's my two cents. Everybody get out of their boat and talk to your state representatives and get them involved in, and it likes to, because we're there for them.
Mr. Walters, not spoken yet, that would like to speak on this. Yes, ma'am.
My name is W. David. I live on Apache Ridge Road. I have a question about the water. I've only lived here a short time. The, um, it's got so much pouring in it, you can't even drink it. So what is the problem here? Are we the only ones having that problem? That you have to go out to have dry water to be able to drink it? That's my question about the water. Why is there so much pouring in it and you can't even drink it?
Mr. Walters, not spoken yet, that would like to speak on this. Mr. City Manager, with that being said, I'm going to turn the fact over. City Manager, if you want to go through and address some of these questions that you had.
Absolutely.
And then I believe some of our elected halls left and said we'd like to get through it.
And so, please forgive me because I was not here until May of this year. But I do believe the first question was a concern about if some of these other revenues weren't realized, what can be taken into account to reduce? I do believe '21, '22, and '23, the city did roll back the millage rate. Part of these truth and taxation hearings as required by the state, I do not think that the city conducted these in '21, '22, or '23 because there was a reduction in the millage rate during those times. But I do not know, I was not here that time. With respect to getting more time, I will say that we were, as a practice, the county is supposed to give, the East jurisdiction, the county assessor is supposed to give East jurisdiction the tax digest so that we can try to have these type of meetings during August, September. I don't think we got the digest, but it's 30 days late than we should have. So unfortunately, in order for property tax bills to go out, we had to take the digest as it came in, quickly look at what it was going to generate with respect to property taxes. And then we had to set the calendar in respect to if the council had wanted to consider a status recommendation. So with respect to more time, unfortunately, this particular year, we did not get the digest until 30 days after we should have gotten it. With respect to table it next year, part of the, the option that I think, in terms of Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can kind of give you kind of how we extrapolated out '25, '26, '27 with respect to, conservatively speaking, holding all of the revenues the same with respect to where we think we're going to end in 2024. If we kept the millage rate the same this year or for next year, the $768,000 deficit would have to be coming from fund balance. 2026, the same, have to be $712,000. And 2027, $650,000. So with respect to what we had communicated, it is an option for the elected body to utilize fund balance to help balance that complete shortfall or portion thereof. So when we advertise for the millage rate, you have to advertise what's the amount that staff thinks would balance the 2025 budget. We came up with 1.5 mills. If the elected body chose to keep the millage rate the same at the 5.221, we would put together a 2025 budget based upon that millage rate. And then what we would do is there would be at the top, so if you see at the very top of your, your sheets that you have in terms of revenue, there's a place for unassigned fund balance. That's where the shortfall would come in at. So to be responsible, we wanted to at least share the information with the elected body and have these meetings so we can get information out that if in fact the elected body did want to keep the millage rate the same, there would be over $700,000 that had to be used out of fund balance to balance the 25 budget as estimated. And so then next year, when we look at where revenues come, and I'll jump to the next question with regards to like the publics, for instance. If it opens March, April of 2025, it will not be on the tax books until January of 2026, I believe. And then we would recognize that in '27, I believe. So the way that it works, it has to be on the tax rolls January 1 of each year, if I recall correctly. So that's a good thing because we will have some of those properties coming online. With regards to looking at the entire budget, the way that most jurisdictions is you do have a millage rate consideration because it is one of the pieces of revenue of the 96 lines that you'll see that the elected body have control over. So the way that these work is you set the millage rate and then once that millage rate is set, then staff can get together with a draft budget that can then be presented to the elected body through a public hearing. I think preliminarily, we're looking at probably November 14th as a public hearing that will be advertised similarly to the way things are where we would present the budget to the elected body. So the moment that the elected body get the 2025 draft budget, it is then published and made available online and in the lobby so that you do have the same amount of time as the elected body to look at the budget, attend the public hearing. And then we try to have it ready for approval, consideration approval, the first meeting in December, which this year I believe is December 2nd. It's not a, you have to have it by December 2nd. It's just our new fiscal year starts on January 1. So before the end of December, the new budget needs to be approved. So let's see here. Unfortunately, we do not have control over the appraised or assessed values. As stated, those are done with the county tax assessor. School taxes, again, that is something that is not within our control that we do not have the ability to, to speak on. That is a school more issue. With regards to, let's see. There was a question about the general fund budget in terms of the executive budget. The way that it works, half of my salary, half of Kim's salary, half of our HR salary, and community development positions in the executive budget. The other half is in the enterprise fund because we do work on the utility budget as well. We're just a small community, so we don't have a utility commission. So that's cost allocation of budgets. Let's see here. And it, it wasn't directly asked for the donations with regards to, there was a question asked, and I think the sheet, the packet has it, with regards to grants. Ms. Kim was able, over the last, I think, two years, received $4 million in grant funding for the various initiatives, whether it's operational and/or capital expenses. So I think that's very well, well-earned, received, a great return on investment. If you were to hire a specific grant person, they typically will take a fee to prepare the grant application. They will then take a fee associated with administering it or they may just charge you a flat percentage of the grant, whether you receive it or not. There are different structures. So to have a person on staff that can function in about 10 different capacities and still secure $4 million in grant funding is very well commendable. So I just want to put that out there in regards to, that's something that is above and beyond. And for the lady with the water question, please see us afterwards or just leave your name before you leave and we'll, we'll review on that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. What I'd like to do at this time is open this up for the elected body. If you have a statement for some answers that you'd like to provide. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is not a debate. So I'm going to allow the elected now time to speak to you as you're here. I'll start on this end and walk my way down. Mr. Williams?
Okay. First, I want to apologize to folks for not answering emails on this or very carefully taking them. Some of the emails I got were accusatory. Folks, I'm not a thief. I'm not a millionaire because I sit on Jasper City Council. And I'm afraid that if I had answered the emails after reading some of those accusations, I would have been more upset at myself. So I apologize that I didn't answer emails. Secondly, please understand, this city council has nothing to do with Board of Education. We can't do anything about it. That's, I want that understood because it's been asked continuously. Someone made the comment that decision's already been made. You obviously don't know the pain that I'm going through right now if you think that this decision's been made. I'm leaning one way, but I haven't made the decision yet. Cost of the elections, that's, the elections are run by the county. We pay the county for the work they do. We can't bring in volunteers to run or run the election. I hope you understand about assessments. We've talked about it a number of times. Will the budget be reviewed and taxes dropped? If possible, certainly. We have, we have rolled back the tax rate historically, all right? We have worked to keep taxes down. Maybe some, that may be part of our issue. Here about the water bill. My water bill, my electric bill, gasoline bill have all gone up. Guess what most, it went up for the city too. And it, the costs to the city are greater. Can it be tabled to next year? I don't know. That eats into the fund balance. It's a shame that the state requires this to be advertised as a 31.9% increase. The state requires it to be advertised as an increase. A percent increase. This 31.9% for the average homeowner is $50,000. This 31.9% for the average homeowner is $15 a month. I know that's rough for a lot of people, but it's, I'm sorry, is that wrong?
This is, you have the floor, Mr. Looney.
I just saw someone.
Nope, you have the floor, sir.
I want to thank our employees. This budget carries no salary increase. Our employees are paying higher water bills and power bills also. They don't have an increase in this budget. There is no increase in the number of employees. So in order to get the work done, they're going to be working harder for less money. That's all I have to say.
Jim made several good points about some of the stuff with our employees. We do have some good employees here and I do want to, you know, thank them for their hard work, certainly. Everybody understand that we don't set the tax assessors evaluations of your home. You know, it seems there's some confusion about that. Kind of with Jim, I did not respond to everybody's. It wasn't because I was ignoring, but I have a full-time job besides this. So I apologize if I did not. We tried to be, have, you know, the city employees to be consistently giving everybody the same information, so we didn't have a lot of misinformation out there. I do appreciate all of y'all coming. I'm with Jim. If you think this has been an easy decision, it has not. I don't think anybody's decision has been made until, you know, we're here, we're paying here for y'all, by y'all, and we're trying to do the best we can. And we appreciate you coming and giving us your opinion and, you know, we're going to do the best we can.
Kim, you have the floor.
Well, I'm a big gratitude guy, so I just want to say thank you all for coming. It means a lot to me. I ran around community engagement and it's great to see you all here. I've been in this role for 10 months now. It's been a great learning curve. I probably started behind the track, but I welcome your conversations, a chance to grow, educate, you know, help me do better, you know, hold me accountable. That's what I want. And so really thankful for all you here tonight. So thank you.
So a lot of you people are new to me and a lot of you I've taken care of for 30 years, either you or your family members. And you trusted me then and you can trust me now. I've endured tremendous criticism and hardship of very few individuals that has been unfounded and unsubstantiated. When I first came into this role, which was eight years ago, we had a city that had been run improperly for 30 years. We had a police staff that was not fully staffed or trained. We had a fire department that was not fully staffed or trained. We had no job descriptions. We had no pay scales. We had a pitiful retirement plan. And with the work of these council members, we changed all that. Publicly ran on a platform that involved reorganize our government, which has been accomplished. Ran on downtown revitalization, which is in the process of being accomplished. And also ran on community collaboration, which we are working on and continue to work on to this day. We now have a fully staffed fire department with pay raises, I think if I heard today, 60%. Have a fully staffed police department. We have free fire engines, including a ladder truck. We have plans for new fire stations on the south side of town. We have professional management in each and every one of our departments. And so rather than have an individual who thinks he can run a city and is playing golf two days a week and putting Band-Aids on our infrastructure, we're working on having professionals that know specifically what needs to be done and how we need to do it. We have addressed complaints on how our parks look and how our parks are going to be, and we have plans in place to address those things with a new public works department. And have we made mistakes along the way? Yes, we have. Will we continue to make mistakes? Yes, we will. Has any decision been made? No decision has been made. I pray hard every day on every decision I make. Every decision I make, I pray on. Despite the personal attacks on my character, my family, my faith, and other things, I still work through that and try to do what's best for this city. Now, some of y'all, that may mean that there may be times where I don't do what's best for you, but I still take every decision at heart. We've come a long way and we have a long way to go. And the quickest way to get there is with this tax. However, and it's, I know y'all have hardships. My taxes have, if anybody says my assessments haven't gone up, come up here right now and I'll prove you differently. My taxes have gone up tremendously. I pay them. I pay, do I pay the school tax? I absolutely do. I pay every tax you do. There's no benefit given to these folks up here on their assessments. We don't get tax breaks. We get paid $250 a month. We do this, some of us spend 30, 40, 50 hours a week sometimes doing this. Some of us have other jobs and they have to do it. The point of this is, we're here for you. We've set a plan in place and we're trying to accomplish. There'll be times when it's really rough. And I'm not afraid to make big decisions. I don't cower in the back of a room. I get up front and put myself out here. I praise my God. And if I have to make a decision that you say we don't want any of here anymore, then by God, thank you, Lord, for letting me serve here. Because if that's what it takes and I have to make the decision, then you vote for somebody. But please, vote for somebody that's either more engaged or more qualified or more passionate about this city than I am. Because I promise you, I am. Been here 30 years. I was a team physician 15 years. I practiced orthopedic surgery, never sued. Did I do all this myself? Absolutely not. All of these people, all of these people were here with me and helping me. We've got qualified legal guidance now. Somebody can criticize one mistake here and there. If they can cast the first stone, that's when they should be publicly criticizing the competence of a man who's put his life on the line in taking care of cities. Brandon Douglas is underpaid. Now, I don't expect any one of you people to believe that. He's underpaid. Kim has gotten, has already been talked about, $4 million in grants, $4 million in grants. I appreciate y'all being here. This is not easy for us. I know it's not easy for you. With respect to my, I tried to answer every email. I forwarded those to Brandon and to Kim. I've made evaluations to see if people were in the county. If they're in the county, it's not that I don't care about you. This is not about the county. This is about city property owners paying taxes. Period. Nora Bunch, I've done her for 30 years. I've taken care of her. I love her. There have been a lot of times we didn't necessarily agree about some things. Ms. Champion, your mother, I loved her. I can tell you.
Jesus, what you're saying.
She's a sweet woman. And not to dispute anything you said, this tax will be $16 a month more for you. Now, I know that's still six.
That's $100, $100. Around $100, $100 a year.
Yes, ma'am.
I won't say that.
So.
That's what I was trying to get a point to you. 15, you said 15. I didn't say it.
All right, Ms. Champion, Dr. Proctor has the floor.
That's okay.
He was talking to me.
That's right. So thank y'all for coming. It's a hard decision. I tried to answer every email. I tried to answer every phone call. There was a flurry of them that came in today, this afternoon, that I wasn't even able to get to. I've talked to several of y'all personally. And we'll just do our best and make the best decision for the city of Jasper and all the citizens, not just the ones that are here tonight. So thank y'all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we had a handout that was given to you. If you can turn the page, it has a yellow strip on it. I believe everyone has this. If you don't, we'll share with the neighbors, please. I appreciate everyone being here. A lot of these answers that have come, based on various questions. There are a couple of you, such as the water, the level, the cleaning, all of that, with the fact. We've touched base with Board of Education. The reason I want to call your attention to this sheet is I know that we had mentioned transparency earlier, Ms. Angelina, and I certainly appreciate it. I know that these public hearings can be frustrating. I mentioned this in the last public hearing. Public hearings are designed for us to hear. They're not necessarily designed as the debate technicals. And so this is the only public hearing where the elected has actually made statements back into the program. The sheet that you have here represents some of our transparency. Now, obviously, it does not have our names on it. But when you look at this list, you'll see the very top one is Jeanette Drive. That is my house. The next five are the council members that sit up here. Those are our houses. Those are our numbers. That's what we'll pay in city tax. Now, something that has been this concern on social media has been that that's all we pay. That's not all we pay. We pay this plus school board plus county taxes. And so as Dr. Proctor and I believe some of the others mentioned, we don't get a break on taxes and we pay the same thing you do. And so we will fill the burden the same way that you do. But I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the very top house listed here is my actual house and the next five are your council members. Now, Mr. Faust is out. He works for Georgia Power. We've been praying with him and for him in his crib. He's been out of town for some time doing hurricane cleanup, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. With that being said, this is strictly on the city tax. And so I know that we've talked about that a good bit. The county residents aren't going to be impacted by this. It's only on city property. The assessments are done by the tax assessor's office. I know that that has been covered a good bit. Dr. Proctor touched on something earlier and I believe someone else did. Our police department, fire department, public works, and our city staff. We have some of the best staff there is. And you may agree, you may not agree, from the top up, from the bottom up. I know that some of you here have retired from the city, some of you may work for the city still, some of you used to work for the city back in the day. There have been vast improvements across our city as far as our employees. We call it Team Jasper. Our morale of our employees is higher than it's ever been. They have proper leadership that was put in place by the administration you're looking at. I know that a couple of times we've mentioned Mr. Douglas or Ms. Goldner. I'm extremely proud, thankful, and grateful for the jobs that they do. If you look at the market for other cities that are comparable to us or around us, you will also see that these individuals are underpaid. Our public safety for many decades was underpaid. Our city staff for many years was underpaid. So for example, one initiative that I started really going after as a council member, and I came on in 2018, was to get our public safety updated because we had some really dedicated, loyal individuals, wonderful people who had never been invested in as a department. Out of that came a police department that is now fully staffed, a fire department that's fully staffed, public works that is fully staffed. But what also came with that was in police and fire, the salaries alone increased 70%. Now, you may say, oh, my gosh, who got that? Your police officer got that. Your firefighters got that. I promise you, we are investing in the employees that are out there saving lives. When we end this public hearing and we go into our meeting, later down, you'll see a presentation for lifesaving awards. We have firefighters and paramedics up here that save individuals on a daily basis. Public works, we took, when we came in, in 2018, 2019, looking across the city, starting pay could have been around $10 an hour. We bumped it to $16 an hour. Our employees deserve a liberal wage. We owe it to them as a community to invest in them. We only, we not only invested in their hourly rate, we invested in their retirement. Our employees know that if they're dedicated to this community, if they put in the dedication and the time and the years, they're going to be able to afford to live once they actually are able to retire. Those are important for us. A couple of things I want to encourage you to do. Number one is follow us on social media. Social media can be used for good or it can be used for bad. I encourage each one of you to really dig down. I know someone mentioned earlier about praying. I am a man of faith. I am a Christian. I am a follower of Christ. And I pray about the decisions, just as Dr. Proctor mentioned, as I know my fellow council members here do, as well as a lot of our staff. This is not something that I even take lightly. I'm the mayor. I typically don't vote on things unless it's a tie. For us, we want to do the right thing. Follow us on social media. And do me a favor, when you engage with us as a city, and you guys have been phenomenal tonight, is we're human. We're citizens. We're fathers and brothers and sisters. We're just people too, just like you are. And we are your elected officials. You do place your trust in us to an extent to put us here and allow us the honor to serve you. What that means is that we may not always make a popular decision, but it may be the right decision based on the information we have. And so I ask for your grace and your encouragement. Going back to social media, the website, and when you're engaging with city staff, whether it be someone fixing a pothole, a police officer on traffic stop, or a firefighter, encourage them. Be kind to them. The world is mean enough. The world is getting harsh enough. The last thing we need is division and hate. And I'm super thankful that even though we may not agree on things, I don't know where Mr. Tony Davis went, but I'm looking for him. There you are, Tony. There are people in this room that I know love us and I know that we love. And we disagree on the conversation we're having, and that is okay. No one threatened anyone, no one cursed anyone, and that is the right way to handle it. And so I'm super proud of our community for a packed house of people that are being engaging in a proper manner. Someone mentioned the assessor's office over in this corner. We did meet with the assessor's office. As a matter of fact, I will just tell you that the county, the city of Jasper, the city of Nelson, the town of Tawke, the assessor's office, and the school board, or the school system, all had a joint meeting to discuss the issues around the assessor's office. There are issues. They deserve to be fixed. Unfortunately, it's not within our control. I encourage you to reach out to those entities, the tax assessor's office, and start asking questions, start attending those meetings. As far as our meetings, our meetings are the first Monday of every month here at City Hall at 6 o'clock. We have work sessions every month. I encourage you, get involved. Like Mr. Hannah said, we all run with the intent of doing the right thing and doing the best thing. Sometimes it's not easy. Tonight is not an easy night. I believe all of us up here, our hands are all probably shaking because we are humble public servants who are trying to answer the people in the most rightful way. It's just not easy. Mr. Looney spoke about the advertisement that the state of Georgia requires. So when you see that notice on our website or our social media or in the newspaper, that actual advertisement, verbatim, word for word, is laid out how we have to advertise it. So the 31.09% is based on the rollback village, not the actual village. So that, there's a little misconception there, but the state mandates it. Someone also asked about the meetings. You know, we're having this meeting tonight. We'll go into another meeting here shortly and then we'll vote. There were two meetings before this. The state mandates how we hold the meetings. So our hands are often tied for things like that. Yes, inflation is one of the causes. Yes, unrealized building permits and infrastructure items like that that were going to be paid for are part of the problem. This isn't a single point or single cause. This is multifaceted. There are a couple of things that caused this. You will notice that we do have, Mr. Douglas, that came back to us recently. We have made changes at leadership levels in order to protect and guide this organization to a better tomorrow. That is our guarantee and promise to you. We're trying to do the right thing. Changes in leadership are not easy, but we navigate those as they come up. As far as the city manager and the assistant city manager, I spoke on that earlier. These two individuals are professionals. They are amazing individuals. I encourage you, I know you may not like the numbers, you may not like what they're paying, you may not like how they respond to you, but do me a favor, get to know them. Come to the meetings. Come to City Hall. Sit down and chat with us. If you'll get to know us a little bit, I think you can find the reason of why we're all sitting here and what our true agenda is. I'm going to, we spoke about what the true agenda is. The intent is not stake anyone's property. That is not the goal. How many of you moved here from another community? I've lived here my whole life. I, I've lived here my entire life.
I've lived here 30 years and I'm running out of town for my property.
Sorry, you just started. You know, I have a floor.
I'm sorry.
So what I'm saying is I've lived here my entire life. And I'm, you know, I'm a product of our community. I love this place. I want to see it go in the right direction. We're on that track. For us, there's no real intent, there's no hidden agenda to take individuals' properties. I certainly want to make that point. There was a new charter put in place a few years ago that separated the mayor's roles. The mayor is an elected official. I am the chief elected. I do not run the day-to-day operations the way our charter reads, which is I do not run the day-to-day operations the way our charter reads, which is our local law, which the governor signed after the state voted and passed it, is that the city manager's office will run the day-to-day operations. The DDA and the chamber, we spoke about sponsors earlier, someone mentioned the Marble Festival. You know, the Chamber of Commerce, you just did a phenomenal job at what Marble Festival was this past weekend. I volunteer, a couple of our elected volunteered, and I encourage you, if you're not sure exactly how it operates, or you want to find out the financials on it, reach out to a chamber member, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, reach out to one of us, we'll connect you with the people to let you know exactly what your chamber's doing to provide services for all businesses and all citizens and all visitors. I'm extremely proud of our Chamber of Commerce, they are continuing to step up to the plate. As far as the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, Downtown Lives, someone mentioned hosting Orange Gardens, there is such a thing called quality of life. Times are hard, times are not easy, but every family can go to a downtown life for free and enjoy the entertainment that is present. Our idea of a gathering place, of a family-friendly environment with activities for children of all ages, to be able to enjoy a safe environment in our hometown, is what that is. The quality of life is important, which means you make the small investments, which I believe have also been skewed. I saw 50,000 to 55,000 online, that's not the case. If you look at what we budgeted for them versus what they brought in in sponsorship, they brought in more in sponsorship than we gave them as a government. They'll do the same thing this next year. We actually had a proposed budget, I believe it's 22,000, which matches last year's budget of 22,000, for four to five large events in downtown. Your government is partnering with them and their sponsors. I'm extremely proud of that. With all those comments being said, thank you for being here. Thank you for being civil. Do me a favor, when you see someone absolutely being hateful or threatening, don't allow that, don't engage with that. The world is a harsh enough place without that. We live in a phenomenal community, and what is phenomenal is the people. And if we as the people can't be civil, then we'll lose that entire community. So at this time, I'm going to call the public hearing portion to a close, and we're going to go to our regular call meeting.